Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the February 8th, 2022 Barville School Committee Meeting. We are having a regular session tonight, starting at 6 o'clock. We are in the Barville High School Cafeteria, 425 East Avenue, Harrisville, Rhode Island, 02H30. Members present all. Lovely to see everyone. We are, as I said, having the meeting in person, but also have a virtual option for families who want to tune in from home. And if everyone can join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Alrighty, recognition, we have none this evening.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the January 11th, 2022 regular meeting and the January 11th, 2022 executive meeting.
Second.
I have a motion from Donison, second from Terry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Madam Chair, I will make a motion to approve the January 2022 warrant for number seven, for the month of January, dated February 8th, 2022, for grand total expenditures of $2,478,258.56.
Motion from Donison, second from Terry. All in favor?
Aye.
There's a bid here for Encore Fire Protection, Patucket, Rhode Island. The bid is to the Firelem Testing Services, conducted February 1st, 2022, 2:05 PM. The bid was for Encore Fire Protection in Patucket, Rhode Island.
Motion to approve?
Oh, motion to approve.
Motion, Donison? Second from Sylvia, all in favor?
I do have a question, if I could. I made the motion, but I do, I'm just curious about the extent of the the cost of such testing. I'm just curious about what they do. I guess you probably could. Gotcha. I was gonna say, yeah, it seems like it would be. Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
How often do they do that? What time is it?
Alrighty, so motion from Donison, second from Sylvia, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Presentations by the public to the school committee, we have none this evening, so moving on to agenda item number five, public comment. So anyone at home, I'm not sure where I'm supposed to, oh, I'm looking right there. Anyone at home who wants to participate and address the committee, if you could just use the raise hand functionality via Zoom, and we'll be able to loop in. And as always, please just state your name and home address. Final call? No? Alrighty, moving on to agenda item number six, personnel, leaves of absence, retirements, resignations, appointments.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the leave of absence for Mandy Compti?
LaCompte.
LaCompte. April 4th, 2022 through June 30th, 2022.
I have a motion from Donison, a second from Sylvia, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to accept the resignations of Allison DiMatto, effective February 18th, 2022, and Mandy LaCompte, effective July 1st, 2022.
Second.
A motion from Donison, second from Terry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And also, Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to accept the retirement for William Lima, custodian, effective March 1st, 2022, and Dr. Janet Lyons, Principal Steer Farm Elementary, effective June 30th, 2022. Lots of thanks.
Second.
Absolutely.
I know. Seeing Janet's name on here is heartbreaking.
I have a motion from Donison, a second from Sylvia, all in favor?
Aye.
Do we need, I always forget. Again, I'll get.
Oh, I'm sorry, I should. File the remaining items for informational purposes only, athletic appointments.
I'll second that.
Motion from Donison, second from Sylvia, all in favor?
Aye.
Alrighty, next, we have administrative reappointments.
For receiving file for informational purposes.
Oh, perfect.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
Motion from Donison to receive and file, second from Terry, all in favor?
Aye.
And I know the full committee knows this, but for the record, I just want to say that we're so, so lucky to have that list of administrators. I feel like the day, and some of them are sitting in front of us, the day to day of school is, you know, difficult enough, so throw in a global pandemic for the last two and a half years, and makes it that much more difficult, so thank you for all you do.
Thanks for all your work.
Yeah. They always say, I don't know how you guys do it, but somehow you pull us through all the time.
Alrighty, old business, fiscal year '22 BSD budget update.
Let's see, we'll make a motion to receive and file. Oh, we've got transfers on this one, right?
Yep.
Okay.
So we're gonna receive and file the report and then make the transfers, Mr. Allen?
Sure, let's do that. Receive and file a report and make a motion to approve the transfers of $217,300 from the line items that are listed to the cleaning and to the teacher salaries.
Awesome. So I have a double motion from Donison.
Oh, yeah, we want to go take each one first, receive and file?
It's fine. No, it's fine.
Okay.
Perfect, yeah.
Yeah.
Just need somebody to second each, right?
Yes.
I'll second it, and then I have a question.
So second from Sean, and then question from Sylvia.
Okay. My question is, transfer the money from the CNA? It was, there was a CNA, and now we're changing into a nurse, does that student have more difficulties? More involvement?
Yes.
And that's why we're doing that? Okay, and the multi-age classroom, what are the ages? What are they? Are they? They're within four years? Are they within four years?
Yes.
It says multi-age, so, and this is pre-K? Okay.
Any other questions? Alrighty.
One more. How many kids are in that classroom? You're adding one more teacher. Roughly. Ten? So the kids are fairly involved? Thank you.
I have a motion from Sean, a second from Sylvia. Nope, I have a motion from Donison, a second from Sean. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on to fiscal year '22 Rink Budget Update.
That's when we can make a motion to receive and file.
Perfect. Motion to receive and file from Donison, second from Sylvia, all in favor?
Aye.
Agenda item number eight, Superintendent's Report. He'll hand the floor over to Dr. Salito.
Hey, thank you, Joe. I have a number of items to report on tonight. I'm gonna start with a COVID update. So luckily, our numbers of absent students and staff over the last few weeks have come down quite a bit, so really hoping that things are heading in the right direction and trending towards an endemic rather than the pandemic. So one of the things that we're a bit concerned about is with February break, a few weeks away, we saw a spike after the December break, so with the February break, we're hoping there's not a spike that mirrors that. So we are considering holding a distinct district-wide testing event to offer voluntary testing on the Friday prior to returning to school, so that's February 25th. Would offer probably a three or four-hour window for parents and students to be tested. Obviously, it'd be voluntary, but we would encourage folks that are interested to take advantage of that opportunity.
Nice. Quick question?
Sure.
Would that be just for students, or would that be for their families as well?
Their families could be tested as well. So we're currently offering weekly rapid testing on an after.
Hello, Mr. Mitch, how are you doing today?
Good, how are you?
I am okay.
Let me back out of this one second.
Acquire the ability to conduct PCR testing as well. So this week will be the last week that the testing will be at the middle school on Wednesdays. Beginning next week, all of our testing will be at the high school, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, from 2:00 to 4:00. And we'll offer both rapid testing and PCR testing. So we've had decent crowds the last few weeks, particularly with the PCR testing, that component. We've seen a few more people show up for that. The equipment's to cumbersome to move from the high school to the middle school, that's why we're keeping it at the high school all three days. Let's see, the other update has to do with the governor's executive order, masking mandate in schools. As I think most people know, it expires on February 14th right now. We're not sure where that's gonna end. It's certainly a hot topic across the state in Smith Hill with the General Assembly. So the governor is expected to have a conference tomorrow, a press conference, and announce whether the executive order, he has the ability or not to extend that, or whether it's going to expire. Regardless if and when the governor's executive order ultimately does expire, a pre-existing face mask policy, I think we refer to it as a face covering policy, will go into effect. So that's the policy that this committee approved in August. Just as a reminder, that policy was recommending face masks for all students and staff, but not requiring them. So that would go into effect as soon as the executive order, there's no reason for us to reconvene or revoke that policy is already in place, and will go into effect as soon as the executive order expires. We'll keep you posted on that. I'm sure it's certainly a topic that we all are very interested in. We'll hopefully have more information after the governor's press conference. Any questions about COVID update, so face.
That's recommended but not required, right?
That's what we had. Recommended but not required, yes. So something to consider with that also is the masking on the bus. That's gonna be a question, because the face mask requirement on school buses is a federal requirement, so it's not dependent on the governor's executive order, but on the federal executive order that was issued for mass transit, school buses count as mass transit, as do city buses and airplanes and trains. So unless that federal order goes away, we might still be, still have to require busing on, masking on buses. But again, all that is kind of up in the air until we get a little more clarity from the governor's side and some clarification on that federal order. Hopefully, if the executive order expires, then that federal order on buses would hopefully expire as well. Wouldn't really make much sense for kids to be bused a mask just on the bus, and then you don't have to require a mask at least during the day. Moving on, next topic is a budget update. As you know, our budget was presented to the town council last week at a joint meeting. Next step in the process is to present to the budget board. This is scheduled for February 24th at 6:30. We're hopeful that the governor's recommended budget will pass through the General Assembly, ultimately with no changes to the projected state aid. As we know, the state aid was adjusted in the governor's recommended budget to address the enrollment drop across the state. That really helped our state aid numbers from taking a significant hit. So hoping that that holds up, and we will present on February 24th to the budget board and kind of go from there. But we're pretty comfortable with what we've presented so far. We've got some good feedback from the town council at the last meeting, and looking forward to the presentation on the 24th.
Is that in the town hall chambers?
I believe that is in town hall chambers.
Yeah, so committee, okay, yeah, committee members, it's not required or mandatory for you to be there that evening, but if you're able to attend, just to show some support of our budget, that'd be great.
Okay, next topic, last fall.
I'm just gonna repeat what I, Terry couldn't hear me. I just said that on the 24th. If you're able to attend the budget board meeting in the town hall chambers, just to show support of the budget, that'd be great, but it's not required or.
6:30, right?
6:30, yes. But not mandatory, Terry.
Mm-hmm.
Sorry.
That's alright.
Pulling. Sorry, I'll project. I'll project, alright.
So I want to share some good news. Last fall, the Skills USA chapter at the high school applied for a Skills USA Lowes Lab Upgrade Grant. And in January, it was announced, we were selected for a $15,000 award. So with this grant, we were able to get our education program, a brand-new wooden swing set, upgrading the environmental science lab with new stools and proper racks to hang the bee suits on, fixed some of the construction labs, air compressors, purchased tools and materials for the engineering program to complete work-based learning projects, and many other projects the funding will assist with. Congratulations to our CTE instructors, students, our Skills USA Barville, and our school-based coordinator, Brooke Katchel, who kind of led, spearheaded the effort and led led the effort towards getting this grant, so congratulations to them. Looking forward to seeing all the improvements that that grant will provide. Any questions on that? And finally, save the date, February 15th, 6:00 PM, in the Barville Middle School Auditorium. The Barville Police Department is offering a presentation for parents of students of all ages. The topic for the night is internet safety. So this is similar to an assembly that was held, a grade-level assembly that was held at the middle school, grade six, seven, and eight, three separate assemblies that the police department held about internet safety. They're following this up with an internet presentation for parents of all ages, so elementary parents all the way up through high school. I think there are gonna be some plans to bring similar presentations to some of our high school students in the coming months as well. So again, that is February 15th, 6 o'clock at the middle school. Just want to publicly thank the police department, Colonel Lynch, and all of the police department for all of their support. Certainly, great community partners for our students and our community.
Great.
That concludes my report.
Any follow-up questions for Dr. Salito? Thank you so much. Alrighty, agenda item number nine, administrators' reports.
I'd like to give a great thanks to all of the administrators for all the work they do. I just feel like I'm obligated to follow in Dot's footsteps, you know? I think that's like her go-to line, you know? But, um, but thanks, many thanks to everybody for that. It's really good stuff, and so it's a motion to receive and file. Thank you.
Awesome. Motion to receive and file from Donison, second from Sylvia, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Reports of school committees, subcommittees. So our new subcommittee assignments went into effect starting last month, so hopefully you've been reaching out to some of your subcommittee leads to learn more about the group, what the meeting obligation is, and details like that. Does anyone have anything to report out this month?
I do.
Oh, awesome, go ahead.
Well, it's kind of a subset of the committee. So Dr. Whaley, for the SIT committee at the high school, had recommended in our conversations of having a CTE subcommittee. And believe it or not, the gentleman who, Mr. Pilling and Mr. Aldrich, actually, we planned on meeting last Thursday, and we ended up meeting Sunday. So they're really committed to this, to their goals for growing our CTE program. But some of the things we spoke about, and that they're gonna be talking with Dr. Whaley and the administration about, is their needs for keeping our CTEs where they are and making them grow, which I know Dr. Salito is, and a lot of the administrators are committed to at the high school. We talked about needs for change of schedule to give the kids more time in their shops. We talked about recruitment. As we all know, facilities updates, which can be costly. The facilities updates, conversations, we're more along, you know, our building is 1966. How do we keep kids here when we walk into a building that, you know, you've got ceiling tiles that are water-stained and, you know, some of the, some of the cosmetic stuff? And, you know, keeping, I know that we've got some new equipment at some of those programs that are really top-notch. So you gotta, you know, you've got a maserati in the middle of the room, but everything around the room kind of looks, you know, like a paint job. But there were conversations along that. There were conversations about possibly a grant writer to help keep it moving forward, as well as working with guidance and sequencing to help some of the scheduling. I know that those two gentlemen are really talking about hands-on experience in the workforce, and that would obviously come along scheduling. But it was, I was just blown away in the conversation, listened to them, I sat back and just really listened to, they really have a plan to take this and keep our CTEs moving forward, which was.
That's great.
I had a smile from ear to ear, so.
Awesome. Thanks for sharing that, Sean. Keep us posted on any updates. Anyone else?
I'd like to share that we had, I had my first health and wellness, I ran my first meeting, so that went well. Dr. Salito helped me, so thank you very much.
My pleasure.
And, yeah, we'll get the minutes up and as soon as possible, but it was great.
Do you mind just seeing me on those?
Absolutely.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Joe. Anybody else?
I could say the BEC did meet last week. I was about five minutes late to the meeting, and it was, well, five minutes. Asked all the information that was afforded to us in that meeting, so. But apparently, the last words were that, you know, we're okay, we're good shape financially, we didn't lose, we didn't win, making it through the season, and, you know, so all good in that department.
A plus for Alfred and just.
Five minutes made such a difference.
Better than none.
Yeah, that's right.
Absolutely. Great. Alrighty, we will move on to correspondence communications. Anyone have anything to share? Items they received this month?
Well, I can just tout the sentiments of, I think, everybody in this room, that, you know, hopefully the governor makes the correct decision this week. I think all the evidence points that it's time, you know, the rest of the world is sort of doing their thing, so. I've been doing my thing for a while, but that's on me, so. But, um, in any case, I'll just share that, because it's top concern, I think, for a lot of people, and, you know, I'd like to voice my opinion on it when I can, so.
Thanks, Donison.
Go.
Anyone else? Alrighty, moving on to agenda item number 12, new business, homeschool applications.
I make a motion to accept the applications as provided.
I have a motion from Sylvia.
A second?
Second from Donison, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approve fiscal year '23 Rink Budget.
I'll make that motion to approve the Rink Budget.
I have a motion from Donison, a second from Sylvia. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Can I just say something, if you had a chance? I don't know if you've been to the Rink. Chris Lacy, and I know I say his last name, I was gonna say, oh, it's because she's related to him, but I'm not really. He did a wonderful job with the girls' locker room. He worked really hard, and it's, it's, it came out really nicely. If you're ever in there, go take a peek. I made him, I made him give me a tour. Because I happen to know the, the coach. So, yeah, he did a wonderful job with it. It looks so good.
He always does a great job.
That's awesome. Thanks for sharing that, Terry. Anyone else? Alright, job description, Director of Development and Strategic Initiative.
Make a motion to approve the position description as presented.
Do the motion to approve from Donison?
I'll second it with a question.
Second from Sylvia, questions?
Is this more or less a PR person we're talking about? I know it's someone who to write grants and deal with the CTE programs.
Yes.
Are they going to do anything else?
In short, that's part of their responsibility, so. Position description in front of you is for a Director of Development and Strategic Initiative. As Sean alluded to in his report out on the subcommittee for CTE, we're looking for someone in the district to really promote our programs, also not just outside of Barville, to draw some students in from other districts, but also to our own kids, to keep kids here, and to make parents and community members aware of what we're doing and what we're offering. So part of the job responsibilities for this particular person would be to promote our programs internally, within our own district, within our own community, and then promote the programs outside our community as well, and hopefully draw some students in to our, one of our seven approved programs, CTE programs. In addition to that, another responsibility would be to look for community partners, look for opportunities to obtain funding, whether it's federal grants, state grants, or private grants. So we really want someone who has a specific skill set, that's background, that's grounded in PR and in promotional activities and in fundraising. So it's multi-faceted. This position will be partially funded through grants and partially through local funding. It will be dependent upon funding, of course, that we even run this position on a year-to-year basis, but trying to think a little bit outside the box and how we can get, you know, the most bang for our buck with a position like this. And I think that providing or providing a position that's dedicated solely to bringing in outside grant opportunities, bringing in outside revenue streams, and promoting our programs, I think could be a win-win. Allows us to promote all the great things that we're doing here, continue to build those things, let our own folks know about it, let the community at large know about it, let the larger community around the state and some of our neighboring towns know about it, and then also bring in some grant funds and some other funding from outside avenues, so.
So will he, they, this person be taking care of all the grants that are written?
Well, there are certain grants that, you know, there are federal grants that we have control over that are, you know, we have Title I and Title II grants and IDEA grants, so they still have very little to do with that, but all new grant opportunities, they'll be involved with writing the applications for those. Once we secure grants, it really is, moves it to a different category. But this would be more about obtaining those grants, so something like the Skills USA grant that we just got, the $15,000. We apply for, to a company called MegaGrants, which gives us literally hundreds of grant opportunities every month. But we don't have someone who has the time or the expertise in grant writing or the background in grant writing to really, you know, apply for massive amounts of those. So we're trying to cast a little bit of a wide net with the grant writing, and then team that up with kind of promoting our programs as well, so. That's, in short, what this position would be responsible for. There is, in the description, a list of responsibilities and what exactly that person will be doing, competencies they would need, and education and experience as well.
Is this, is this a full-time?
It'll be a full-time position. It would be.
Temporary, or is it, is it a permanent, gonna be a permanent position for the school?
So it would be a contracted position.
Contracted.
It would be dependent upon funding from year to year. So for this year, it would be partially grant-funded and partially locally funded, and then hopefully in FY '23 with the budget, we can do something similar to that again, and then for future budgets, we'll have to see. But at least for this year and next, we're hoping to have someone in place.
This person be responsible for new videos, making new videos of CTE program, et cetera?
It could be. Yeah, that could be part of the promotion, and we have videos for every program already, so I'm not sure if we want to continue to do videos, but those kind of promotional activities, yes. Really, it would be more event-based. We want to start having events, you know, having open houses at local libraries, whether it's our own library or, you know, a library in another town, where you can, you can draw crowds in to get information about our CTE programs.
TV news, too?
Could be news, could be newspaper, could be social media outlets, those kind of things.
And I'm sure once you have a qualified new hire, they'd help drive that strategy.
Oh, for sure.
Yeah, so I think a lot of it's probably to be determined. I think, you know, the new hire who would start on the position would help make those decisions and figure out what's best for the district.
Yeah, I mean, our thinking rationale behind this is that this person in this position, it would pay for itself probably within the first three months, at worst. And then anything after that would be really more generating revenue for the district, whether it's through, you know, keeping our own kids who may be looking to go to other CTE programs, drawing in students for CTE programs from neighboring districts, or obtaining grant funds. But this, a position like this could, could bring in a lot of revenue for the town, for the school department. So will the position, Dr. Salito, also be looking at, like, those kids that, you know, the why, why are our kids leaving? So that we can create a plan to strategically keep them here? Yeah, all that data is certainly important to look at. I've got two middle schools, actually, this week that we were informed of. We're looking at neighboring programs, program, CTE programs in neighboring schools, so. Right now, our guidance councils meet with those kids and talk to those families to find out, you know, why they're leaving, and sometimes I have a follow-up conversation with the parent about that. But it certainly would be something that whoever's in this position would, would be looking into and maybe compiling some data on that, see if we could identify a trend. I've heard of positions like this before, but it doesn't seem like, I mean, we may be ahead of the curve on this. I don't know of any of the districts that have created a position. A lot of other districts hire outside firms to do this for them, and rather than have their own employee, they'll hire a marketing firm or a PR firm. We had Martin and Associates years ago, that was doing some of that for us. They've disbanded, they're no longer operational. We had a company that bought them out. They did some of our promotional work with the videos that Sylvia was talking about, those kind of things last year. So the funding that we had put aside, I think we put about $10,000 to $15,000 aside for that, that would be part of the local money that we can use towards funding the salary. So that would offset some of the costs as well. But honestly, I think it's something that would, you know, within the first few months, more than pay for itself. I like it.
Have we ever, like, reached out to any of the parents? Have we ever, like, reached out to any of the parents, and maybe this is something that this position could look into? Reaching out to the parents whose kids have already left the district? And possibly presenting something to bring them back to our district? I don't know, it, it just seems like they've, they've gone. And some of them have left the district, and we're, we're teaching what they left the district for here now. You know what I'm saying? Like, some of the CTE programs that we're teaching here, they had left the system because we weren't teaching them here.
So we do, we do have some kids that come back every year. A, a lot of kids leave for a, a year or a half a year and come back. Be surprised at how many kids go, for whatever reason, and then they come back three months later, two months later. So that does happen quite a bit. We haven't reached out to kids that are honestly, that are doing well in their schools, because I, I don't think that would be productive conversation. I, I did meet with several parents over the last couple of years to find out why they were leaving, and the reasons were all over the map. Some of them were legitimately for programs at other schools that, you know, that they were interested in, and some of them were for other reasons, whether it's based on, you know, relative goes to that school, or based, based on other, you know, other factors that are involved in that. Legally, we can't really deny someone the opportunity to attend a CTE program in any school that.
If we don't offer it here, correct?
Not quite.
No?
So the General Assembly passed a law that states if you have a substantially similar program, then you have the right to deny a student access to a substantially similar program in another district. And the Department of Ed and the Career and Technical Education Board of Trustees, which is a state-run organization that the Governing Board for all things CTE. They publish a list every year of substantially similar programs. This year, there are zero programs in the state that are considered substantially similar. I'm gonna reserve comment on that. I don't know how that could possibly happen. But this, they've received some feedback from, from me and other superintendents that questioning how that's possible, when several of us have the same curriculum, use curriculum from the same company, so. For example, our engineering program uses Project Lead the Way curriculum. Before I was in Barerville, I was at Situate, we have an engineer, they have an engineering program there that uses Project Lead the Way curriculum. I know for a fact, because I was one of the people who designed that program in Situate, that it's a substantially similar program. And the Department of Education and the Board of Trustees does not recognize them as such. So Mike, it's essentially school choice at that point, it's just that you can go. It would appear to some that it's an end runaround school choice. So there is a CTE Board of Trust meeting, I believe, either this Friday or next Friday. So I'll, I'll attend that, see if I can get on the public comment section. I did, there's a superintendent who sits on the board, who often brings some of these concerns to the, the board. And I did register my concerns with, with her, and she was in agreement that something seemed a little off. I don't know how there could be zero substantially significant programs anywhere in the state. There's also an appeals process where if you think that there was an error made by the rider, by the board, you can appeal it, and they can look at the programs again. But it's a lot of hoops to jump through, in all honesty, so I'm not sure how that will hold up. And there's also an appeals process for parents, if you deny a student, like, if I refuse to sign it, so you know you absolutely can't go to whatever other school, they can appeal it to ride, and you know, if your, your programs are not on the list of significantly similar programs, substantially similar programs, then that's, you're gonna lose that appeal. So, a lot more to come with, with, with that. I, I think it was an end runaround of the, the law that says in writing, you know, specifically, if you have a substantially similar program, then you, you have to stay in the ascending district. So I'm, I'm gonna keep working on that one. I'll, I'll update you if there's any, any movement, but right now, there is zero.
Ask you a question about that? Like, if somebody comes to you and they want to go to a different school, and you deny them, you say, no, we have a similar program, you have to stay in Barerville, whatever, however that works, I don't know what the do, what is the parent's recourse? Like, do they appeal it to the Department of Education?
They can't appeal it to ride.
Okay.
And then ride, rides. The guidance on this is that if you're not listed on their list of similar programs, then the parent has the right to send that child, and there's, and there's no programs listed on, the list is nothing on it.
That's absurd.
This is the first year that they've published that.
It's absurd.
I, I, I agree. I'd like to know how that, if you could give us an update on that, how that turned out.
Yeah, because that's absurd. I'm sorry.
No, we kind of went off in different directions, but bringing us, which is all good, all good dialogue, but just bringing us back to the job description. I'm thinking down the road, but it seems like there's a lot of interest around what this, this new hire would be focusing on, so maybe once they're comfortable in their new role, maybe they provide us, again, if it's not too, too large of a lift, they provide us with an update every month. If they have any, you know, big callouts, these are the grants they're writing, this is what they're focusing on, just so we have an idea of what they're, they're working on day to day. But just an idea, I don't want to put too much on the new hires, they're trying to get situated with the district.
I was gonna make a suggestion, maybe, I mean, during the administrative reports, maybe that person could have a little bourbon there.
That's what I was thinking, yeah.
Yeah.
Just add it, add them to our, our pocket.
There is a motion still on the floor.
Motion, bringing us back to motion, motion on the floor, so I believe it was made by Donison.
Yes.
I think we already have a second from Sylvia. Yeah. Second from Sylvia, all in favor?
Hi.
Alrighty. BHS Overnight Field Trip, so this is Overnight Field Trip for Decca. Make a motion to approve. Motion to approve from Sylvia.
A second.
Second from Donison, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Moving on to discuss, discuss slash vote on the Rhode Island Student Survey.
Can we give a little background on this before a motion, or do you want to have a motion and then open it up for discussion? It's up to you, whatever.
If you want to provide context, I think that works.
So the Rhode Island Student Survey, you have a copy in front of you with the agenda, with the survey attached in the letter from BHDDH, and this survey is a voluntary survey, it's given through middle and high school students, grades eight through 12, I believe, and it's used primarily for data collection in, in several areas. So Monica Blanchett from BPAC, I asked her to be here, and she graciously offered to, to be here. This is something that BPAC uses to ground a lot of their work and to drive a lot of their work, and it's something that they connect their funding opportunities through. So we have conducted the survey in, it's every two years, so I believe it was 2016, 18, and 20. So this will be the fourth time we've conducted the survey. And we have a really strong response rate, somewhere around 80% in, in the past. We just got the results from the 2020 survey back, and again, that's connected a lot to funding that BPAC uses as part of their part of the funding source and, and using this data to ground a lot of the work that they're doing with prevention alcohol and, and drug and at-risk behavior prevention. Any specific questions? One of the requirements is that the survey has to be approved by the school committee, and the school committee chair has to sign it as approved before it goes to the next step, which would be building principles, approving and scheduling. Make a motion.
Who made the motion?
Sean.
Sean. So I have a motion from Sean. Anyone want a second motion?
We missed the question.
I just have, no, I just have a motion from Sean to approve the survey. Approve, use of the survey. Second from Sylvia, all in favor?
I have a question, if I could. The, the connection to funding. This, this is funding that comes from the state government or federal government? Okay. And do you know, maybe you could answer the question as well, or someone else may be able to, how many other districts are involved with this survey? Do you know how many other districts? And just a process clarification, so a, a letter would go out to parents prior to the survey explaining the background of the survey, what it's used for. It's strictly an anonymous survey that's voluntary, any student who's uncomfortable or wants to skip a question or not take the survey, certainly not mandatory required, and it takes about a half hour, it's about a 30-minute survey from start to finish. So, parents will Do the, the parents actually see the survey, too? So they, they can, or are they provided that in advance, do you know?
I'm not, I'm not sure.
I think there's valuable data to be obtained, I think, in helping what you guys do. I really do. I've had concerns in the past with sort of surveys that are done in this, in this fashion, sort of the framework of the questions that are asked is concerning to me, and I've always got a my eye on data privacy issues as well. And the Google thing doesn't make me all that comfortable, but I, I think I would vote against the survey despite some of the other things. I would think that would it be possible to generate the data necessary to make your decisions without having this mechanism in place? Could we do an in-house grassroots type effort that would obtain the same data without sort of outsourcing this through a Google connection and? Okay, so. Okay, alright, gotcha.
So, Donison, are you suggesting like a paper and pencil version?
Um, not necessarily. I think there's a, there's a couple of components of it that, that concern me a little bit, just sort of the nature of the way that the questions are sort of presented upfront. There's definitely valuable data embedded in there, but well, instead of getting into the weeds of it all, I'm not saying that there's necessarily a question that would come out of this that I, I, there's a lot going on here, that's of course of value and importance. I guess my, my thought process on this is that, you know, outside agencies that provide these services to us seems to be not necessary for us to generate the data that we're looking for, to do something meaningful within the district, but to your point with the, the money, you're saying that these surveys have been done in the past, and that becomes the mechanism by which the $625,000 comes to you. And Yeah. Gotcha. So always about the money at the end, right? Okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
Any other questions? Discussion?
When we send out our letter, can we attach the survey to the parents, can see it and not go to a link?
I'm, I'm not sure.
I think most people will be lazy and not go on that link.
We could look into that, see if it's possible. I'm not sure. If it's possible to do that, we will.
Um, if you, if you can just provide an update either way in the Friday pocket, or if not this week, next week's. Victor, I don't, I don't know if you could hear me, but I asked Dr. Salito just if he could include an update about this, about what he had found out, if we can do that or not, include the update within this week's update, out to us on Friday, and if not this week, then next week. Just so you, you get an answer.
Is that something you would consider wanting to table before you made your decision, or? Not that I should ask him directly, but just bringing it up, it's a concern, maybe he doesn't want to vote, or not gonna speak for him, but maybe we change both of our minds, I don't know.
Well, I think there's a motion on, is there?
There's a motion on the table, right, there's a motion on the table. So part of discussion, in any case.
Can I say something?
Yeah, absolutely.
So I, I just want to say that I think all of this information is super important to know, and you know, I just, I think what you're doing is wonderful, and it's all, you know, very relevant and real, and I think it's wonderful.
I do as well, so don't get misconstrued by my
I, yeah, I understand that it gets, you know, some of the questions, but you know, this is what they're dealing, these kids are dealing with all, every day, right now, anyway, and
Thanks, Joe. Alrighty.
I just have a quick question, the, the questionnaire here. It, it's gonna, you said it's gonna be electronic? Okay, so they don't have to answer the questions. If they don't feel comfortable answering the question, they don't have to answer, they can just skip to the next question, and it's not gonna, you know, God forbid, you're putting something in the computer, well, you didn't answer this question, you gotta go all the way back to it. It's, it's not like that. If they're not comfortable answering it, they just don't answer it, they move on to the next question, correct? Okay. And the kids are gonna know this, that they don't. Yeah.
Alrighty, so I have a motion from Sean, right? It was a while ago. Motion from Sean, a second from Sylvia, perfect.
Will we get the results of this?
Yes.
And when will that happen?
Was that a question for me, Terry?
Is it? I'm sorry, I'm, I'm looking all over. Is this middle school or high school?
That's good.
Okay, I must have missed it. Sylvia and I can't hear because this machine is back there.
Motion from Sean, I have a second from Sylvia. Members in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Members opposed?
Opposed.
I'm moving on to discussion slash vote on revising March school committee dates.
The motion open?
I have a motion to open from Donison. Second from Sylvia, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
I can jump in here if I may. I'm requesting that the March school committee date be changed and pushed back one week. A couple of reasons. First one is that there are five Tuesdays in March, and we do have February vacation, so we are very close, we keep the March 8th, I believe it is, school committee meeting. Is that right? March 8th?
Correct, yeah.
Keep it as the 8th, there'll only be a few weeks since this meeting of, of school because of the February break. I prefer to have it on the 15th, so that gives us an extra week to report out and look into any issues that we have from this meeting and address those prior to the next month's meeting. Very unusual that we have five Tuesdays in a month. So the March meeting would make more sense on the 15th. I also do have a conflict on the 8th, so I may be out of state on March 8th, would not be able to be here, that's why I am requesting that the meeting be moved from the 8th to the 15th. I'll make that motion.
That's what it was.
See, I'm not losing my mind.
Terry reached out, thinking we were changing tonight's date.
Oh, no.
You're not losing your mind.
Okay, good.
Alright, so it's being proposed that we push out the March meeting from the 8th to the 15th. We have the same six o'clock start time. Thanks, Monica.
Thank you. Thank you.
So I will
Oh, God.
We don't need, do we need a motion?
Yeah, so I I made the motion.
No, so I have a of a motion from Donison and a second from Sean already. Is there any other discussion?
What is the date? We're going to clarify. It is next month and not this calendar that we have in our hand.
So it's going to be the March eighth meeting is going to get pushed out to March fifteenth, same same start time of six o'clock.
Twenty twenty-two.
Twenty twenty-two. Committee members in favor? I would say, folks, you know, if something pops up in the coming weeks where you can't make it, no worries. Just feel free to shoot either myself or Dr. Slied on email or give us a buzz. Give us a shout, whatever the saying is, give us a shout. All right. Diving into a whole slew of policies, we have policy five one zero zero goals of personnel policies revised first reading.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the revised policy relating to personnel management. Is this the first reading? And dispense with said reading.
Motion from Donison.
Second.
Second from Sylvia. All in favor?
So Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve policy related to personnel management. First reading and dispense with reading. Oh, posting advertising the position. I'm sorry, just give you the first heading, which they're all the same, so.
So policy five one one zero.
Let's do it that way.
Motion from Donison. Second from Sylvia. All in favor?
Okay, let's try this again. I'll make a motion to approve the policy Personnel Management for Professional Development Policy P five two five one. First reading and dispense with reading.
Motion from Donison.
Second.
Second from Sylvia. All in favor?
Can I have a question on that? I have a question. So how often does our our professional development team meet? It's one year? Thank you.
Last but not least, make a motion to approve the administrative vacancies policy, policy P five one one one. First reading and dispense with reading.
Motion from Donison. Second from Sylvia. All in favor? Moving on to the draft of the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school calendar. Motion open from Donison.
Second.
Second from Sylvia. All in favor?
A couple of points of clarification on the calendar. The Department of Ed, right, has issued a recommended state calendar. Our calendar, the draft that you're looking at, mirrors the school vacations, which includes the December break, the February break and the April vacation, as well as, I believe, the Thanksgiving recess. So start date and end date in professional development days may be different than the state calendar. There are not going to be distance learning professional development days built into the calendar next year like there are this year. Those have been pulled off the calendar. But the I think the most important part of mirroring the state calendar is making sure that those vacation weeks are uniform across the state so that parents and teachers don't have daycare issues and childcare issues with, you know, their their work school having one vacation week in their school of residence where their children attend having a different different week. So that does address that. Everything else is pretty uniform. This is obviously just our first draft as we have to fill in several of the dates that are missing there. But wanted to get this in front of you for approval so that we have a start date and an end date in the vacation days there. So that folks can start to plan if they have anything upcoming for next year and will know when those vacation weeks will be.
Did the did the state double check their holidays to see what the?
They cast a wide net on the holidays. So there there are several days of observance that that particular communities can choose to observe or not. Jewish holidays and some other days of observance as well.
Rather than a motion to approve, can I just entertain a motion or receive a file until we we receive it in final form? Or do you still want us to approve it in the state?
The draft with provision that we know there's going to be some dates added to this.
Actually, can I throw in another quick question, looking at the November calendar? The the week of the twenty-first is only going to be one day of school?
Yeah, we're just looking because it's
The color version, I believe, that day of the twenty-first is a parent teacher conference. Oh, the middle school.
Oh, because it's the shading and
Any other questions for Dr. Salito?
The number of professional days, we only have three on this calendar. Are we expecting to put more?
No.
Just three?
Yes.
Okay.
And there there are other, and Julie, keep me honest here, but there are other professional development opportunities throughout the year, right? We're just not doing for for smaller subsets of
Full release days, yes.
Correct. For smaller subset of staff members, just not full release days where, you know, we don't have school.
And parent teacher conferences will put have still not been put on here yet.
Correct, correct.
This is draft number one, just looking for approval of draft number one. Once we have a finalized calendar, I'll bring it in in front of the committee again for final approval.
Was just the the option for distance learning at all, like virtual snow days kind of thing? Is that still a thing for next year?
We may, in all honesty, we may decide against that next year, even if it is an option. I think having, there's nothing wrong with a good old fashioned snow day and having kids in front of teachers a hundred and eighty days a year. It's in June or or, you know, December or January, I think is the right thing to do.
Yeah, plus if it's not a customary thing, it's kind of like everybody would be stuck from scratch again, like we could go back to that.
And under a pandemic and emergency circumstances is is one thing, but if if we have the option, the opportunity to have a more traditional snow day and make that day up in June without too much burden on on folks, I think that's the way to go. Yep.
All right. So I will entertain a motion to approve the current draft of the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school calendar with the nuance that we will be re-reviewing this when all the the gaps are filled in with final dates.
All right, let's make that a motion.
Motion from Donison, second from Victor. All in favor? Moving on, agenda item number thirteen, committee comments on agenda items. Anyone else have anything else to add?
Could I say something?
Yes.
And I know Dr. Salito had mentioned it last month and I told him I will remind him, but I forgot. But as a school committee member, I'm going to brag, but also as a parent, I'm going to brag. My daughter Courtney was named, she's a woman's head coach, hockey coach, and she was named coach of the year last year for women's hockey. So I think it's an accomplishment for our school.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I can brag a little bit, I guess. I have that right. So, yeah, so it's a nice accomplishment for our schools whenever one of our coaches gets some kind of recognition. Yeah.
Anyone else? Pending issues, we have none this month. So moving on to our favorite agenda item. A German. Motion to adjourn from Sylvia. From Don, all in favor? Hi.